Good morning. It's nine o'clock and I'll call to order the June 14th meeting of the Celine County Commission. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weath?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Yes, ma'am.
Now I'll stand for a flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you much. Now time for our citizens' input where citizens may speak on county government business, usually limited to three minutes, and for items that are not on our agenda. Anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of approval of tax rule adjustments as presented, approval of counts payable as presented, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. Any commissioners wish to address, amend any of these items?
No.
Nope. Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries five zero. Now move into our action items. Item number one.
Elder Abuse Awareness Month proclamation with Brandy Bohm, Domestic Violence and Elder Abuse Program Manager with D-Back.
Good morning, Brandy.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
June is Elder Abuse Awareness Month, whereas according to the National Council on Aging, one in 10 seniors in America experiences mistreatment or abuse, including domestic and sexual violence, financial exploitation, and neglect. And whereas abusers of older adults are both women and men, and are usually family members, caregivers, healthcare workers, or other trusted individuals, and due to the shame, fear, and other barriers elders face in reporting abuse, only a limited number of victims are able to get the help they need. And whereas elders throughout the United States lose an estimated 2.6 billion or more annually due to elder financial abuse and exploitation, such as the illegal taking, misuse, or concealment of funds, property, or assets of a senior's for another's benefit. And whereas too often, elder abuse threatens the livelihoods of older individuals, erodes their extraordinary potential, and increases their risk of death by 300% compared to seniors who have not been mistreated. And whereas Celine County's vulnerable and older adults of all social, economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may be targets of abuse, neglect, or exploitation, which can occur in families, long-term care communities, and medical settings. And whereas we all have the responsibility to support the safety, welfare, and dignity of vulnerable and older adults, and must work toward ending elder abuse by assisting victims in accessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better and more resources for older adults in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies, and engaging and discussing with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of older abuse. Now therefore, the Celine County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims June 2022 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Celine County, and urges all citizens to work together to protect elder adults from abuse, neglect, and exploitation, because it is imperative that we refuse to tolerate the indignity of elder abuse.
Very good, Brandy. Do you have any events scheduled this month to address elder abuse?
So I talked before, this is the second year of our elder abuse program. And so I've been working with banks throughout, like through the calendar year, on red flags of financial abuse, working with long-term care facilities on red flags for elder abuse, physically and emotionally. And then also, we are doing a Facebook Live on the 30th of June, and I've been working with the Senior Center, and then I finally got my foot in the door at DCF to work with adult protective services, so that we can coordinate services that way.
Great, great.
So.
Okay, I'll bring it to the commissioners for possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we proclaim June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we proclaim June 2022 Elder Abuse Awareness Month. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
Brandy, could you introduce your support group here?
Yes, this is Sarah Benoit, and she is our HR specialist, yeah, business development manager, so several hats.
Very good. Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item number two A.
Public hearing for educational facilities revenue bonds for KW with Philip Smith Haines County Administrator.
Good morning, commissioners. As I mentioned to the commission, yes, sorry, last Tuesday, Kansas Wesleyan University is in front of your commission today for possible issuance of educational facilities revenue bonds. To start with, we are required to have a public hearing under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982. And I'll start by asking the county clerk if she has received any written public comments pursuant to the notice that was in the Salina Journal last week.
I have not.
Okay. Scott Waller from the law firm of Gilmore &amp; Bell is online. I didn't know if Scott had any prefatory comments, and then we can open the floor for any public comment.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you, Philip and county staff. Just wanted to speak on the notice of public hearing for this TFRA hearing for federal tax law purposes was published last week. Federal tax law requires that we give notice and opportunity for the public to hear and voice their comments regarding planned projects to be financed on a tax-exempt basis, federally tax-exempt basis. Kansas Wesleyan University, of course, the county has issued for the university several times before, most recently in 2020. This time, a new money financing, not to exceed $6.3 million for capital improvements at the university's core campus and thereabouts. So I think with that, Phil, if you would take over and open the hearing, or the commissioner would open the hearing, and if no one has comments or speaks, then feel free to close it.
All right. Anyone in the public who wishes to address this public hearing on revenue bonds for Kansas Wesleyan? Any commissioners? Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing. All right, we'll move on to item number two B.
RFA 157-22 Resolution 22-2363 Educational Facilities Revenue Bonds for KW with Philip Smith Haines County Administrator.
Back to you, Philip.
And then I'll punt it back to Scott as well. So this is just the resolution and associated documents that actually moves forward if the commission wishes to go ahead and issue the educational facilities revenue bonds, now that we have conducted the public hearing. And any other comments from Scott?
Yeah, just as Phil said, final authorizing resolution, sort of same format as approved in 2020. Again, important for the county team and public to understand that this is part of the federal tax law rules for tax exempt financing, that you need a governmental issuer. That does not constitute debt of the county. The county has no financial liability for this debt. It will be a conduit issuer, and the university bears all financial responsibility. So this resolution before the county commission would approve issuing the bonds in amount not to exceed $6.3 million. From there, we will proceed with, you know, gathering signatures and target a June 30th closing and issue date for the bonds. That's it.
And I know we'd also have representatives from Kansas Wesleyan in attendance if they had any comments before commission takes action.
Good morning. I'm Rhonda Beethy. I'm the CFO at Kansas Wesleyan University. And our purpose for this bond is student housing primarily. We are at a tipping point. We continue to have increases in our enrollment, but we are at a, we are full to the brim in our residence halls. Wesley Hall, which has been our upper-class men's residence hall, has some serious infrastructure repairs that need to take place, principally plumbing and electrical. The building, the structurally is great, but the infrastructure has served its purpose and it needs to have some major work done. That's one of the primary items. We're also looking at upgrading all of the furniture in all three of our residence halls. And then we talked a year and a half or so ago about the tiny homes. We have just taken down another house that was sitting on Claflin, and are prepared to build the first eight tiny homes on the corner, basically the corner of Claflin and Highland. Those will each house five students. Again, they'll be, we're looking at upper-class students for those residence homes. We're calling that Coyote Row, and looking forward to then, as need, we can add to that. We are just very excited with what's happening on our campus, and this bond will make it possible for us to continue to increase our student count.
Okay. All right.
I had the pleasure of attending your campus for a Relay for Life a couple weeks ago, and I was just amazed how beautiful and lush everything was. Really looks like an awesome facility, even with the excavator down, down, down the street ripping up, demolishing old houses, so.
Right. So one of the other big things that we're doing is we're going to build a new dining facility at the, it'll be at the corner of Kerwin and Santa Fe. So that will be, currently our dining facility is on the lower level of Pfeiffer Hall, and this will be a new facility that will then allow us to have, repurpose some of that space. But more than that is to have a gathering place, not just a dining facility, but a gathering place for students and the community to have a space where they can really get some great food, but have some great conversations, work cooperatively on projects, and that type of thing. Right now, that's the home of Mudfest that we had in May for our students prior to leaving, but that's the plan for our new dining facility is on that corner, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I have a question, I think, for clarification from Phil. On the, under the request for action, the second paragraph, the very last sentence, it says, because Celine County has no other plans for debt issuance in the calendar year 2022, these KW bonds would be bank-qualified. My question there is, I mean, I assume that the issuance of the bonds for the jail do not affect this ruling or statement?
Thank you, Commissioner Vidrickson, for that question. Yes, that is correct. We do plan to issue the second series of bonds for the jail facility if they are needed in calendar year 2023. And the federal tax years go by the calendar year, and so since we have no plans in calendar year 2022, that allows us to assess Kansas Wesleyan.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
I have a question, I think, for Scott. Do these bonds affect our ability to go after our rating for bonding and such in the future?
No, they do not, because, because they're really a credit liability of the university and not the county. They will not impact the county's credit rating or anything you might do with the rating agencies.
Okay, thank you.
And also, if I might add, just for good measure, I really appreciate the work that Phil and the county staff put into each of these bond issuances to help the university. I know it's an extra lift and really meaningful in terms of economic savings for, for the university.
Okay. Well, Rhonda, personally speaking, I would like to do anything possible to, to help promote Kansas Wesleyan. I went to school there, my wife graduated there, and I think it's quite a blessing to this community. So we'll bring this back to the commission and see what kind of action we can take.
Thank you.
And I just have one quick question here, and it's probably to Phil or Scott. It's that, and I, after reading that, some of this is that, I understand part of it, but it's like, we have the one book here, and it's between the, it's the, the bond trust indenture between Celine County and the bank, and the other is the loan agreement between Celine County, Kansas, and Kansas Wesleyan. So is that there is no time at all if something would default, that it would ever come back to Celine County? Because some of this, it reads like, it's like, oh, it's really between Celine County and this here, but...
Yeah, Scott can probably address this in a lot more detail, but we are the issuer, so the, the bank is loaning us the money, then we're turning around and loaning it to Kansas Wesleyan. But Kansas Wesleyan is the one that is on the hook for it, so to speak. And so I think there is a theoretical time when a default could happen, but I think that's like, two hours between the time paperwork A is signed and paperwork B is signed. And Scott, you could probably answer that question better than I can.
Yeah, Phil, you're exactly right. I don't think there's ever a moment when there is a liability for the county beyond, you know, taking the universe, the money that the university pays for loan payments, and, and, you know, it goes through the trustees. So the, the bond trust indenture that was mentioned is actually, there's a corporate trustee, that's role is basically to step into the shoes of the county for purposes of receiving payments from the university and transferring them to the purchaser of the bonds, which in this case actually happens to be the same, same entity in a different capacity. So UMB Bank is, has a very sophisticated corporate trust practice, and is the corporate trustee, but also is the purchaser of these bonds. So no, no county liability, but you were right to identify, so for federal tax law purposes, we need a governmental issuer, hence the county, in order to be able to obtain tax exempt, issue tax exempt bonds, which means that the county stands in as issuer, and if you were, you know, sort of borrower of the proceeds, but the, the obligation to repay the bonds is exclusively the university's obligation. So the bond indenture and then the loan agreement is between the county and the university. The university agrees to make all payments, and then the pursuant to the bond indenture and the loan agreement, the, the county assigns its rights to the bond trustee, and then the bond trustee essentially steps in as paying agent and administrator, so that the county doesn't have to handle any of those payments, but no, no financial liability of the county at all.
Okay. Hey, thank you. Thank you both.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Did I ask for public opinion? Anyone in the public wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 22-2363 as presented by staff.
Second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 157-22 Resolution 22-2363 Educational Facilities Revenue Bonds for KW. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
On behalf of Kansas Wesleyan University, I thank you.
Yeah.
You bet.
Our pleasure.
Good luck.
Thank you, Rhonda. All right, we'll move on to item number three.
RFA 156-22 Update and Propose Changes for ARPA Funding with Philip Smith Haines County Administrator.
Good morning again, commissioners. So this is the latest in a series of actions regarding our American Rescue Plan Act funding plan. I know things keep coming at you and keep being somewhat fluid, so I've tried to start this with a recap of what we've done so far, just to document how, how we've gotten to this point. But there are really five things that we're asking for today, five or six things that we're asking for today. First is that we would like to do another grant program. We've done two grant programs so far. First, we did water and wastewater grants back in December, or, well, we launched it in November, you all approved it in December. And then most recently, we have done the, what we call the Safer and Healthier Celine County Grants, which were our Public Safety, Criminal Justice, and Mental Health Grants. Those will be coming back to you for award next Tuesday. So the next series of grants that we would like to do is a series of grants for nonprofits in the community that have been adversely impacted either by COVID or by sort of the economic aftermath of COVID, the supply chains, staffing challenges, all that sort of thing. And so we would dedicate $500,000 to grants to local nonprofits in amounts up to $150,000 each, for them to make physical changes to their business that are required because of the things that they've had to do to adapt to our current environment. So this would be things like purchasing computers, or different types of cubicles, or realigning doorways, or, you know, what have you. It would not be for their staffing needs, it would not be intended to be for, you know, hand sanitizer and that kind of stuff. It's, it's bigger capital-type projects. The second request is to allocate $200,000 to the county's registered deeds office to engage a vendor to properly index our real estate records. This would be a boon to the local real estate community, which of course has been going like gangbusters over the last couple of years, to do historical land record research. It would also help the registered deeds office cut down on foot traffic. The registered deeds office is probably the office that unfortunately had, of all the county offices, been most directly impacted by COVID. They had to shut their doors twice. So this allocation, if approved by the commissioners, would be matched by registered deeds technology funds, and so I think it's a worthwhile investment. The third one is, we had previously talked on March 1 about the idea of dedicating approximately $25,000 to county employee development and retention activities. So just come back with a little more specificity on how we would actually use that money. Then we would, and again, this is one that we've talked about a number of times, is allocation of a million dollars to the city of Salina for rental housing and qualified census tract. So this is, you know, the ambassador project, so to speak. So the state has awarded $25 million in the 2023 state budget. We need a local match for this. The city has The city has dedicated funding. We have planned since last summer to to contribute to that. So this would just be firm direction from the commission that you wish to go in this direction and tell us to negotiate an agreement with the city, bring it back to you. Then I'll skip down and planning allocation for local road projects. And we talked a few weeks ago, the county engineer made a presentation regarding the bipartisan infrastructure law. And we said, yeah, we will probably, in order to effectively position Sline County to draw down those funds, we will probably need to spend some money on some consultants and some plans. And so this would repurpose seventy-five thousand dollars of the administrative expenses to do that. Specific agreements would be brought back to the commission for approval. I am getting really bad popping on this microphone. But I think that is justified because in looking at the administrative expenses, we had put aside a really healthy amount for iParametrics, our consultants. And I really don't think that they're going to end up spending anywhere close to this. So I did talk to them and we we feel comfortable repurposing seventy-five thousand for this. And then the biggie for today is a request to reallocate seven hundred thousand dollars in funding, six hundred thousand from the business and nonprofit category and one hundred thousand dollars from the poverty reduction category to the public safety and criminal justice category. And the purpose of that would be to provide funding to renovate the third floor of this building for two new courtrooms. We've done some very preliminary work with an architect on just sort of like, here's where things could go. And based on what we know, here's what we think the costs would be. And that cost is a somewhat mind boggling three million dollars. And so we have about two point five million that we can draw down from our capital improvement fund. But in order to give us the rest of the money and a small contingency, asking that you reallocate seven hundred thousand dollars of the ARPA funds to go with that two point five million. That introduction of federal funds into the project does, of course, come with some strings. So we've had to make sure that we issue an RFP that for architectural services that was approved by our federal consultants. And we'll have to do some similar things with bidding processes for actual construction. So it's it's not without complications, but it's probably the easiest place to get the money in that amount, given the fact that we did not know that the courtroom need was coming when we adopted the current year budget. So then I have included a chart that sort of attempts to lay out all of those things so that you could see them visually. And the the changes that are being requested today are sort of highlighted in gray. It does still leave us with just over half a million dollars, about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in total that would be unallocated after this action today, if you approve it. That is all in the business and nonprofit category, so we could continue to do a few additional programs there. I think I'll stop talking and answer any questions from commissioners.
Yeah, I have one. Is the seven hundred thousand for the courtroom construction, is that the maximum allowed? Or are we capping that ourselves? Or is there any more monies available we could put towards the courtrooms?
Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner White. So it is not the maximum allowed. It is the amount that I've been advised that we need. But we could dedicate that other five hundred and twenty-five thousand to this project if we need it. That's sort of one of the reasons for not spending it all right now. And then, as I mentioned, of course, then we have the money from our own capital improvement fund that we would dedicate as well because that would not be the full cost.
Have we planned to use any of that for other projects, the two point five million? Does that put any other projects at risk, I guess I should say?
Oh, that is also a great question, Commissioner. I I'm going to say no. It doesn't put any other projects that we currently have on the books at risk. It it does mean that future opportunities might not be there, right? So one of the things that the commission approved actually last Tuesday was to move forward with the master plan for county facilities. And so we don't know what's going to come out of that. I just, I actually met with the the firm that's doing that work yesterday afternoon. We don't know what's going to come out of that. We don't know what the dollar amount will be on that. So, you know, spending money now means you can't spend it in the future. So from that standpoint, I guess it does constrain us for making other choices later. But it doesn't put any of the currently planned capital projects at risk.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bob Vidrickson. Phil, on the very first thing that you had mentioned on the grant program, and who would be, would there be another group put together? Or would this come under the ARPA people that we've already put together to determine who would get the money and how much money they would get?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Vidrickson. Great question. Yes, I would anticipate that this would be just like we have done the first two grant programs, where we did have outside folks who looked at the grants, who were not grant applicants. So for the first grant, the water and wastewater grant, we recruited one county staff person who is not part of the ARPA process, one individual from the city of Salina and one individual from the city of Hayes. And they evaluated those grants and and made recommendations that I brought to the commission for the the applications that you will be seeing next Tuesday for the public safety and criminal justice. The committee ended up consisting of a mental health professional from northwest Kansas, a sheriff from McPherson County, the sheriff from McPherson County, and a judge, a municipal judge from the Kansas City metro area. So got those folks to evaluate. So I would look at putting together a similar panel for the nonprofit capital projects grant. So haven't honestly given a lot of thought to who might be appropriate for that, but would but would try and follow that same process.
Would the commission have any input on that? You know, who would be good candidates? Or would that be done outside of of our range?
Well, certainly, I would love to take your suggestions on that. Yeah, I'd be I'd be happy to, if you have particular names that you think would be good for that, be happy to do that. The last two, you have delegated that responsibility to our office. It has not come back to the commission to approve the names. But, yeah, I'd certainly be happy to take any individuals that you thought would be qualified.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Phil. On the nonprofit capital grants, is this for work going forward? This is no projects that they have done during the COVID.
Oh, great, great question. So as a reminder, so this is, you know, the ARPA funding is stimulus three from the federal government, right? So in stimulus two, which was our CARES Act, we did give a lot of funding to local nonprofits for things that were really immediate needs. So some of the Plexiglas and hand sanitizer and air purifiers and that sort of thing. This, the ARPA funding, by the by the terms of ARPA, must be things that were contracted for or, you know, constructed after March of 2021. So it's really recovery focused rather than immediate response focused. So we could go back, you know, if they started construction last month, we could go back. But if they did something in 2020, we can't go back that far, so.
And my second question, and I think the other two commissioners were alluding to it. The the capital improvement fund, we've visited quite a bit about rainy days and needing roofs and air conditioners and boilers and things like that. And I hate to see us dip into that to the point where we can't handle something that comes along. I would, I would lean on the the ARPA funding more than than leaning on our capital improvement fund. But that's my thoughts.
Well, certainly, I mean, if the commission wants to change that number for me, I'd be happy to. Yeah, that's.
Okay, I just, a quick question is that we have the, in your list of items, approved programs, the potential future programs and the remainder. What is the last date for this ARPA funding? Can a potential future program be allocated funds from?
December thirty-first of 2024. We have to have the funds, well, I'll say maybe a couple of months before that, right? Because we have to have the funds obligated by December thirty-first of 2024. And obligated basically means under contract, right? And so the way we have been working this, we have announced programs, sort of done awards, and then come back with a final contract, right? So the commission basically sees everything twice. So sometime in 2024, late, late 2024 would be the ultimate end date. Many of these things, though, we have tried to get out in 2022 under the thought process that people will need a couple of years to spend it. And if they don't get it all spent, we want to be able to pull it back and reallocate it before that window closes.
Okay. And all the funds and, excuse me, and I'm I'm sure that it's in here, but I can't. The funding that we never provided to the airport authority for the airplane flight, is that all still available in here or is that already been allocated?
Oh, yeah, so we did pull that back. That was one point six four million. And so in the, in the prior version of this table back in March, I had that sort of crossed out. In here, I don't have it specifically identified. So it has been sort of absorbed into the other programs in business and nonprofit recovery. So it is, you you will see that there's three hundred and three thousand in potential future programs for support for pilot training. So we are still planning on doing something out at the airport. So there's that. And then honestly, part of the six hundred thousand dollar proposed transfer really comes from that money.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to see, I'm just going to throw out a number if you're asking us. I'd like to at least see one point five million go towards the third floor, which would be half. If that means that we have to reallocate lower for some of the other folks. You know, I just think that this is a priority for the community. I think some of those other organizations have had access to money during the last two years from COVID relief, too. It's not like they have not had any opportunity, you know, with PPP and the things like that. But the, but the courtroom has not.
I would definitely concur with your comments. If at all possible, and a follow-up question, Phil, is we still have our consultant on board? And this second five million dollars, is that within their scope of work in the contractual agreement still?
Yes, so we did, I was pleased that we did actually get the second payment. The treasurer confirmed that last Thursday. So we have, the money is all in the bank now. The, we have a contract with iParametrics that is what I'm going to call open-ended. And then they have task orders. So we've passed the first task order and they're drawing down on that. We've always anticipated that there would be a second task order. And so we've reserved some money for that. Like I said, I've shrunk it down a little bit based on our experience because they haven't been spending the money as fast as I thought they might. But yes, that that second five million is included in this and it's part of what they'll be helping us with.
Thank you. I for the life of me couldn't remember the name of our consultant, so. Thank you.
I'm a little surprised that the five hundred thousand that you're proposing for the nonprofit can be made to grants up to a hundred and fifty thousand. Three, three grants would, could possibly wipe that off. But when we did the water wastewater, it was a five hundred thousand and we had a fifty thousand cap.
Yes, so you're you're absolutely correct about that. I will say a couple of things. One, we anticipated a lot more interest in the water wastewater than we do in the nonprofits, which came to pass. We had a lot of applicants for that. We've also dedicated another, I'm not going to get the number correct, two fifty-ish, that, two fifty-five oh eighty-four, that we're anticipating doing more awards for water and wastewater. That's in one of those future category things. And so, yeah, we could certainly shrink the size of the individual projects for the nonprofits. But the thought process was there would probably be fewer applications. And since some of them would be, you know, really moving walls and that kind of stuff, might need to be a little bit higher amounts because the nonprofits don't have access to steady stream of income like a water district should. That was, that was the thought process, but I mean, we can certainly change that.
No, I appreciate the explanation.
I guess my point is still the five hundred thousand. So, I mean, everybody, everything is worthy of of something. But I think the primary concern that we're going to have is that third floor. And that's been thrown upon us and that's a huge chunk of change. I mean, I wouldn't mind if all of that was allocated to the third floor. Plus the five hundred thousand dollars that's extra. Would that get you to one point five million in the ARPA funds?
Yeah, so I think what I'm hearing.
I'm throwing a lot at you.
No, I I think what I'm hearing is maybe we table this report today. No, I, I think what I'm hearing is maybe we table this report today and I bring it back next Tuesday with some revisions, change some of the numbers. And I mean, I, there's certainly enough play in the programs we haven't done yet that if 1.5 million is the target or 2 million is the target or whatever, we can make that happen.
Well, and I also want to, I mean, I don't want to dominate the discussion here. I think Commissioner White and I are on the same page, but I haven't heard from the others, so.
Well, Commissioner Vidrickson, you're going to hear from me now then. Your last comment, Commissioner Shadwick, I really agree with. And someone said it earlier that the nonprofits, and not that we're trying to shortchange nonprofits, but they have had access to a lot of ARPA funds up to this point. And as, as Commissioner Shadwick has stated, this is being thrust upon us with a very short turnaround period for the courtrooms. I would say that if we can fund that totally out of, out of these funds that are available, that's where it should come from. And I think that would be a, obviously it would be a huge savings to the taxpayers of Salina County if we were to draw upon that money totally for this project.
Well, I, I believe that, that the county should have, it has the ability to tap into this and, and it meets the criteria. I mean, we're a nonprofit that's going to be moving walls and, and doing such. So I, I would, I would really like to see you tweak your proposal, bring it back to us. I don't know if I, I would do away with any or all of the other, but maybe do some scaling.
Shrinking, yeah.
And see what that does. And because I, I, I believe to be fiscally prudent, we need to protect our capital improvement fund for, for items that, that we have yet to address. And, and you can't draw that down to where you can't handle some type of catastrophe that should come along. So that's just my personal thoughts, but.
That's good. Is a week long enough? You've got a lot of players, the consultant, iParametrics.
Oh, yeah. Actually, I have a call with iParametrics this afternoon and I'm working on, I've got a lot of irons in the fire with regard to the courtrooms. So I think I can certainly bring this back next week. That should not be a problem.
Okay. You do have this as an action item, so do we need to make a motion to table?
Table.
Is that a motion?
Yeah. I move we table RFA requests.
For one week?
For one week. Bring it back and review it. And that's in regards to RFA 15622.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion from the commissioners? Any discussion from the public? All right. It's been moved and seconded that we table RFA 156-22 for one week. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Phil. All right. Item number four.
RFA 158-22 franchise with Cox Communications with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
It's the Phil Show today. Sorry about that, commissioners. So we have received notice from Cox Communications that they are expanding their service area. They're going to serve the city of this area and they are also going to serve an portion of the unincorporated county just north of this area. The state law changed in 2006 and when a cable provider decides to serve an area in the unincorporated county, they're supposed to file with us this notice and we are allowed to ask for a franchise fee of up to 5%. The last franchise that we did for cable television in the unincorporated area predates the current state law. And it was with Twin Valley Telephone. And at that time, we got a franchise fee of $1 per year, which I've confirmed Twin Valley is paying us $1 per year. And so the question is whether commissioners would like to request $1 a year, whether you'd like to request 5% or whether you'd like to come down somewhere in the middle. And staff's recommendation is that we go ahead and request the 5%. It's probably an insignificant dollar amount in the scheme of things, but there are very few such opportunities for county government and staff recommends we take advantage of this one.
And it's consistent with what city charges, I believe, if I'm, if I'm right?
It is consistent with what the city of Salina charges. The city of Assaria was going to be debating this last night and I requested the city clerk to send me an email, but it doesn't look like I have that yet. So I don't know what they ended up deciding.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me. Do you have any idea how much revenue we're even discussing here?
At the outside, I think it's probably $800 a year. I mean, it is not much.
More than a dollar.
More than a dollar, yeah.
Here we're just talking about $5 million in ARPA monies, expenditures, and this is no-brainer, so.
That's the joy of this job. Sometimes it's big numbers, sometimes it's small numbers, so.
But we will be setting a precedence for future. And this is just for the unincorporated areas that they'll be touching. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any other discussion from the commissioners?
So does it, does this have a bearing on what does happen, whether the city, which way they go or what they've decided?
No, they're technically separate franchises, even though it's the same piece of cable.
Okay. Gotcha.
All right. Any, any remarks from the public? If not, I'll bring it back to the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move we request a franchise fee of 5% from Cox Communications as recommended by staff.
Second the motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 158-22 franchise with Cox Communications. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Five zero. All right. We'll move to informational items. Item number one.
Jail update with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning again. So this is our monthly update and since I'm facing this way, I don't know if Lauren has brought up my pictures yet, but this is an exciting time in the world of the jail build because we are starting to see actual vertical construction occur. It's okay. I can vamp for a little bit. The other thing that I will note that is a little bit different this month is that I've also included a list of the change orders. So the sheriff and I, the commission previously gave us authority to approve change orders of up to $100,000 if we agree. If we disagree or if they're over $100,000, they'll be coming back to you for approval. So there's a list of three that the sheriff and I approved through the end of May and they're actually, one is positive and two were negative, so it's actually saving us a little bit of money at this point. But now that we have the pictures up, so this first picture shows just the cells that have been set. So these are the precast cells, again, that we contracted for that were, that were cast up in South Dakota. Sheriff and I and, and the construction team went up there for that tour. This one shows the crane. These two show the crane actually. You can see how tall the crane was and, and it's hoisting the precast cells off of the back of flatbed trucks and setting them into place. And so each one of those that you see there is a, a stack of two. So there's the lower cell and then another one stacked on top of it. And then they're placed next to each other. And the spaces that you see in between are where there will be block wall construction for showers and chases and other things in between the groupings of four cells. Not just, that one I love because it's, actually shows one being lifted and shows how high that crane is. So in addition to the cells, there's some block wall construction going on out there as well. Once all the cells are set, which we anticipate to be probably end of this week or, or middle of next week, the crane will move out and they'll go back in and pour concrete in the middle of those cell blocks. They did not pour the concrete because that crane is very heavy. So they wanted to wait until after the cells were set to go back and pour those floors. So they'll be starting on that, weather permitting. And that's kind of where we are with the jail. I'd be happy to answer some questions from commissioners.
Questions of the commission? Doesn't look like there's any questions, Phil, so.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to item number two.
Initial budget request for 2023 with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Last item, I promise. So this is just, I've given the commissioners this sort of an overview of what has been requested by our departments and our outside agencies. This year is a little bit different. Last year, I just gave you the expenditure requests. This year, I've also, because the process is a little bit later, we've also been able to give you all of the non-property tax revenue requests as well. So hopefully that information is, is helpful. The good news is that non-property tax revenues are growing significantly by almost $1 million. And of course, the bad news is that expenditure requests have grown by 4.4 million. That does include the full implementation of the WSU pay plan. I've, I've put that as the request for salaries. It also includes the anticipated cost increases for insurance. And the bottom line, as, as noted in, in the staff report, is that we would need to reduce those requests by at least $450,000 to get us back to net zero mill levy increase. That still is, I would say, a, a net zero mill levy increase is still a tax increase to most residents and businesses because most valuations went up. But I'd say that's sort of the, sort of the minimum goal is to get to no mill levy increase and then commissioners can decide whether you want to go lower than that and, and actually try and not raise folks' taxes very much. So this will, this is just a presentation. Be happy to answer some basic questions, but we will discuss this in more detail, delve into it with individual departments on Tuesday, the 28th. We'll be in study session that day to really focus on the budget. Any initial questions?
Any questions, commissioners?
Nope.
Well, we will hash through this on June 28th. All right. Item number three.
Commissioners comments?
Comments from the commissioners?
Not a comment, but a question to the county administrator. A lot of sheriff deputy activity in the city of Salina lately. Is there something going on? A lot of stops. I saw two yesterday on Santa Fe. I just didn't know if there was a grant doing everything or do we have that many employees that they can patrol city of Salina right now or is there an agreement with the city of Salina because they're short? But a lot's going on lately.
Okay. I have not heard anything from the sheriff, but I'll check into it. I'm meeting with him tomorrow, so I'll let you know.
Hearing none, we'll go to item number four.
Announcements.
Any announcements? I will mention, is it next Monday that the city-county building will be closed for Juneteenth?
Yes. So city of Salina, the courts and the county will all be closed on Monday for the new Juneteenth holiday.
No other announcements?
So, Mr. Chair, if our business is concluded, staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss contract negotiations for 20 minutes and reconvene in this room at 10:22.
So moved. Second.
Okay. So moved and seconded, we move into executive session and for 20 minutes and return after that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose.[1621.83] Post. Three, and we are out of executive session. No action was taken. Is there any other business from the commission? If not, I would entertain a...
So moved.
Motion to adjourn in a second.
My second.
All right. We have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.